Wait.
Ready?
You up?
All right, I'll leave.
Huh?
I'll take the.
Perfect. We got five thirty.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution, for the nation under God, in this vote, for the liberty of us all.
I like.
Thank you, sir.
That's part of me.
Broca.
It's updating. Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Manhew.
Yes.
Carol Zoltier, Brenda Simmons, Craig Scott.
Here.
Uh, agenda.
You know that.
Any additions or corrections, commissioners?
Uh, let's see. I, it is, it's updating.
Most bad timing.
Yeah.
And I'm good with it.
Okay, public comment. Have a comment in the room on agenda items only? Public comment on the phone. Appointments, we have Mr. Brian Hart, Michigan Institute of Forensic Science and Medicine related to medical examiner's appointment. Come on up, Mr. Hart. Good evening.
Good evening.
You have the floor.
Um, just to pay attention to the work that was sent last week, we have a change in our staffing at Michigan Institute of Forensic Science and Medicine. We have new medical examiner, we would like appointed. Uh, and we would like a deputy, new deputy medical examiner appointed. Everyone has their qualifications, their CBs with them. There were any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We did have the information on our iPads. It looks like you also in the interim, you have a you're requesting Dr. David Stockman?
Yes, deputy medical examiner, correct. He's a board certified pathologist. Um, there was a letter in that packet as well that came from the prosecuting attorney's office in Saginaw. Um, that spoke to his um uh, expert testimony that he is offered in Saginaw County. Several on several occasions, and he is also proficient in autopsies. He's performed between three and five hundred autopsies in his career.
You're requesting he in the interim until Dr. Khan gets what exactly? Like, I guess I'm not following.
Um, it's just a good idea to have a deputy medical examiner as well, just two individuals that can um offer support when needed, just, just as a backup. You know, it's, it's something that we've done in the past as well. It's just, just a good idea, just um extra help. If one person's not around, then the person has.
Commissioner Scott?
It says interim though.
Interim for, for the time being, right?
For what? What's the guess? How long?
Oh, um, uh, hard to say.
Couple of weeks?
No, 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 no. I, I would say several months until um, you know, uh, again, with this change over, we just wanted to make sure um nothing slips through the crack, my balls are dropped.
No, last time you were here, his name came up in conversation.
Oh, yes, yes.
Who's name?
Stockman.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you came here because his name came up in conversation last time.
Correct.
And he was not going to be in a in a working mode at all, and then you came back here or somebody did. I think it was.
No, he didn't come back. You've only been here one time.
I, I came here a few months ago when obviously uh.
That his name popped up in, in, in that ownership or
He is.
partnership or something like that.
Exactly, yes. But um, like I said, he has done this in the past um for several counties um as well. Um, but with this change over, I just want to make sure that all our ducks are in.
Us too.
Yeah.
Cause we're getting other letters from people in our realm that are questioning what the heck's going on. I mean, we, we talked about Stockman not being in a, in a working e- environment with you guys, and I, I was understanding that's what you said. He was not.
He was not at that time. I mean, like I said, we're trying to bring him in now. I don't know what, what letters and emails you're getting or, you know.
Some of the stakeholders involved.
I um, you know, I, I have Dr. Stockman with me. He, he came here with me tonight as well. He's more than um, if, if you'd like him to come up and answer any specific questions.
The guy letting the door.
But um, but yeah.
I owe him what room to come to.
If you'd like, I mean, obviously um I can't. All I can do is offer up facts, and, and these are the facts. This is a CV, these are his qualifications. Um, there's um, he, he brings a lot to the table. Um, other, other concerns, other rumors, gossip. Um, I've been speaking um with um your administrator quite often about every little thing that comes out. Um, or, or said, or, or what have you. Um, all I can speak to is the facts. We will, we will help offer, continue to offer the best services um that we can provide over the coming.
There's a lot of controversy and a lot of allegations uh currently um that I've read up on in the past couple of days. Um, I, I, why?
I think that was regarding me.
Why? You can come on up. I guess why all this transition? Like, you've been back here quite a bit lately. Um, it sounds like things have kind of been up in the air. I, it seemed stable when we first signed the contract with you, and now there's just gonna, there's been a lot of uh staff and jet, hang on, sir. There's been a lot of staff changes throughout the last couple of years. Why?
Well, I mean, there, in all fairness, there are staff changes in, in every operation, every organization that, that I deal with on a regular basis. Um, in this specific case, we have a medical examiner that's moving on. We have to fill that role. We fill that role with a qualified individual. Um, you know, obviously, we have staff that come and go. We've also hired new people. We fired new uh MEIs for Ogumal County. That individual is usually here at the meetings as well, to be very visible. So it's it's an ebb and flow. I would say.
Commissioner Wilson, do you have something?
I mean, I could address the aspect, at least of Mahabir. You know, he was with us for about three, three years. That's a long time. Again, he is also on a uh visa with us, right? So, you know, I'm sure you guys also being in Ogumal County, the prevalence of physicians is super hard to come by. A lot of times, we do have to get uh physicians to stay around. Sometimes it is due to you know, a visa, if that like makes them stay in the area. He's not originally from here. We would obviously love for him to stay. Um, additionally, I've, I've never met a physician that felt he was overpaid, uh surprisingly. Um, you know, um, you know, he made quite a bit of money as a part of our group. And again, I think that there is moving on to better pastors. Um, I don't think that there's been a lot of turnover. Uh, the previous medical examiner prior to uh Dr. Mahabir was terminated for cause. As a matter of fact, we have some letters from the state uh that show uh he labeled somebody as pregnant. Uh, that wasn't in fact pregnant on their death certificate, but that was part of the reason that we're still in litigation with them. Um, so again, you know, we don't like to talk about a lot of like the human resource issues, but we're happy to if necessary.
Commissioner Wilson.
Um, so obviously for us, and this is a, a big item for the county. Not only is it a large expense, but as I said in a number of meetings in the last couple of months, especially since you came to meet us, this type of issue would happen to a county resident. It's the worst thing that can happen. Someone loses their life. So we want to make sure that our people are in the best hands possible.
And at least for myself, you know, for myself, it's to be a, a transition piece. Again, I'm, I'm too busy to to be a full-time ME. That's why Dr. Khan is your ME. Look, if, if you don't want me to be your deputy ME, I'm, I'm more than happy to step away, and you guys can just appoint Dr. Khan, and I won't uh work with Ogumal County. However, you know, I have done over five hundred autopsies. I will say in the environment that you guys are in, there's a lot of back channel and back talk, right? And the people that are in this business that want your guys' business, you know, they don't have the services that we're able to provide, right? So they're not able to do a comprehensive type of service to your county and give you the price that we're able to offer because we're part of a physician group, right? Where we're able to bring in the highest expense person, right? A three hundred thousand dollar plus physician with expenses, right? The other competitors in the area, they have to siphon that stuff off. All right? And, you know, they don't have, I think, the resources that we have, being able to do toxicology, being able to do your own.
Being able to have our own, bless you.
So, you know, for us, we believe that that's kind of like where a lot of the rumors and the nonsense stuff. Again, you probably wouldn't even hear from Dr. Stockman if I wasn't even in litigation with the last guy who we terminated, who we're still in litigation with after four years. And as a matter of fact, that person that we're in litigation with, the county which he's currently employed, did give us a letter from their chief prosecutor saying that I was qualified as an expert. And again, I have done over five hundred autopsies. I'm more than happy to have our uh corporate counsel, who's actually Mike Cox, uh former attorney general for the state of Michigan, actually give a brief for you guys if you need it.
Go ahead.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to talk.
Yes.
Um, so I originally, there was some, some, some talk about some possible issues with this, and I had a few of your former MIE, MEIs um reach out to me. And I think the main reason is because they were in my township. They were concerned. Uh, the main reason they reached out is they, they loved their job, working what they did, but they weren't getting paid. Uh, they were telling me that, you know, checks weren't, weren't able to be, be checked. So of course, that's a concern. So that's what I brought to Tim. We started looking into this because again, we want to have the best service possible. So then Mr. Hart comes to our meeting and says that a question we asked him, and he says one hundred percent that you have no stake in this company, yet you're here tonight giving me all this information about the company.
So that's not what Mr. Hart said. Mr. Hart said that Dr. Stockman is part of the ownership group of Michigan Health Clinics and which Michigan Institute of Forensic Science and Medicine is a subsidiary of that group. And Dr. Mahabir was an employee of Michigan Health Clinics.
Okay.
Contracted with our forensic. And as far as what you were told, I understand that. Um, I'm really not going to go down that rabbit hole in a public meeting. That's, that's an HR issue. But um, I have certainly shared um a lot of, there's a lot of inaccuracies. I'm sure that what, about what you were told.
Okay, well, we have to do our due diligence.
Of course.
Um, and I do appreciate you guys both being here tonight. So um, it's just again, a big, big concern of ours, and we have to, you know, obviously make some decisions here.
Of course.
Isn't there an active investigation of what Commissioner Wilson just reported?
About what?
Funds, people getting paid. I, I, I.
So every, all employees have always been paid. And number one, that hasn't been an issue with the forensic office, okay? Uh, I believe when there was a transition of financial institutions that probably might have been like, that was about a year and a half ago. There might have been like potential hiccups, but outside of that, uh, I don't know of any active investigation.
Tim, would you like to take the floor on this?
Um, I think you pretty well summarized it. And this was relatively recent. It wasn't a year and a half ago. It was really summer, if I remember correctly, when we were.
So whenever, I would, I would say, I would say there was an issue with a former employee of the forensic office who was inappropriately invoicing the company for services that he did not render.
You seem frustrated.
I don't think that this should be spoken about in an open meeting. I think that these are HR issues that we have no problem discussing, but it should not be in an open meeting. I feel uncomfortable about that.
Well, we feel uncomfortable.
Employees, specific employee issues, we shouldn't be talking about.
So I, I, I see what you're saying, but we feel uncomfortable about spending a hundred and some thousand dollars of county residents' money with a company that is having these issues.
You don't, you don't.
We have stakeholders coming to us with major concerns about your guys' service. We have a job to do, and we're going to ask these questions.
Absolutely. Your service is always, there's an option for a closed meeting, a closed session for, for specifics with employees.
That's true, but.
But you're not our employees, so we don't have that.
And we, we do.
And as far as I know, the forensic office has always offered top-notch service and will continue to offer top-notch service. I, I get that it's frustrating dealing with like some of that. You wouldn't hear about any of it again with a lot of this fake news stuff that's going on if we weren't in litigation with the per, person that we terminated with, terminated four years ago.
Yeah, yes.
Go ahead.
Um, see, Mr. Hart, uh, Mr. Stockman or doctor, I guess. You guys are doctors.
Or you are. I'm, I'm a physician.
Okay, so let me. Dr. Stockman. Uh, I want to be perfectly, perfectly correct. Uh, and he just, he just gave us an option a few minutes ago of not working with him. Yeah, hypothetically speaking, I guess uh, if, if we were to take that option and not have.
To do less work.
Would, would your, would your company still work with us?
Absolutely. There's, there's nothing that um, there's no state policy or anything um regarding a deputy medical examiner.
Right. I, according to law, I, I may have a deputy.
Exactly right.
Would you have another alternative deputy?
Um, not, not currently, not currently, no. And, and I just do want to correct. I, I don't believe the contract is quite that high. Um, several hundred thousand dollars, maybe the contract is right around.
Eighty-five, eighty-eight. Fiscal year twenty-five, we budgeted ninety-four thousand one seventy.
Pretty cool.
Calendar year versus.
That's pretty cool, so, yeah. A little bit less than that, but yes. Um, but yes, okay, absolutely, and I have to.
Well, you know, it was Dr. Stockman that offered the option, you know, it wasn't my idea.
Of course.
So I said a little over a hundred thousand.
Let me in, I have to.
Yeah, yeah.
Chair, can I say one more?
Go ahead.
So i- in those conversations, Dr. Stockman just up, just expressed that if we would go with someone else, it would be a couple hundred thousand dollars. Tim, we did receive a couple bids during this last process. What was the next?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to look at that number precisely, but it um, yeah. It was more, I can say that. We had the third one that came from Western Michigan, and that was almost double. Uh, maybe more than that, but there were two that were relatively close to one another. Obviously, MISFM was the low bid. Uh, and second one, just I can't, and all I know is looking for it here. I didn't actually put it on the iPad, but.
But the second one was somewhat in the ballpark.
It was in the ballpark. I, I, I think that'd be fair to say.
Yeah, I would say that probably both of them, again, are competitors, right? So one of them is uh one of the groups, um Mid Michigan Medical and Examiner Group. They're going to underbid you. And they're not actually going to tell you the fact that they don't even have a pathologist on staff. And that they use Western Michigan to perform all their autopsies. And that one line item on there that's not going to be hidden, right, is the amount that they're, they're going to charge you is going to be the amount that we basically charge you for everything. But they're going to still invoice you separately from Western Michigan, who they send their autopsies to. So it's going to be their amount for their services, plus another a hundred plus thousand to do the autopsies at Western Michigan because they don't have a pathologist. The other group, which is Dr. Maroni, who I'm sure you've also heard from, right, doesn't even have a pathologist on staff.
Obviously, the board is free to do whatever the board feels comfortable doing, and, and, and I, I respect that. What I would um ask the board to consider is the services that we offer and that we have offered. We're in our second contract right now with Ogumal County, and that's based off of services. I've always um mentioned when I've been up here that um we're very transparent. Like I said, we always have a represent. I, I don't want to say always. We, we often have a representative at these meetings just to be visible. Um, if anybody were ever want to go and, and take a look at our facilities down in Saginaw, you're more than welcome to. I'll, I'll say this as well, and, and again, I am not trying to be confrontational in the slightest. I'm a pathologist by trade, okay? One of my I moved to Saginaw. I'm not from here. My wife is from Saginaw. Her family worked for GM, about a hundred and fifty people in the area. I would have never found Saginaw or at least this area of Michigan in a million years, right? But I love it now. And regardless of all this news nonsense, I'm not going anywhere. And when I came here, I started with nothing, and I grew a company that's over a hundred and fifty people. And I'm sure you guys running a large county like yourself and dealing with lots of variances of employees, they're hard to control, right? And everything is difficult, and nothing is easy. And even me, running this large company is very hard. So what I'm trying to get at is, when I came to this area and decided to start this group, it was to bring in some of the specialty physicians that I had, you know, encountered in my day. What I wanted to have is a chief forensic or chief medical examiner. That's going to be a board certified forensic pathologist. Right? And that's still our goal. But obviously, when somebody resigns in a matter of thirty days, I can't force them to stay. I can't force us, force them to love like the middle of Michigan, right? I need a little bit in order to replace them, right? So again, we already have a job posting up. We'll bring in somebody else like we always do. And they'll be around, but your quality of service will not change. And that's what I always have to say. You guys will be able to serve your county members. People will, or decedents will get investigated properly. And your prosecutor's office will have an easy time with all of their trials as they have for the last five years that we've been in contract with you guys.
For.
When does this contract expire?
This current one, I believe, is twenty twenty-eight. It has been five years, twen- uh, twenty nineteen.
We have to give a ninety-day notice or what is it?
One eighty.
One eighty. Right?
Go ahead.
Um, so Dr. Khan is, is he brand new to you guys? He just came on board because of this other.
Correct. We, we, we knew of, we knew him. We had a relationship with him, but yes, yes, he's new to the office.
Is he new to Michigan?
No.
He's been practicing here for about thirty years.
I believe thirty-eight years.
It's.
Okay.
What kind of family?
No, you're the CEO.
Yes, sir.
And I guess Dr. Stockton, you, you, you're taking a lot of singular ownership of this company. Uh, you are a group of owners, right? Is that?
Yes.
And you are a, a, a owner of a few or ten or?
It's a company that owns.
It's a company that owns the health clinic.
Okay. Another company owns you guys.
Right.
You got this going, and you sold out to them.
I would say investors.
Well, okay, because you've taken this, I build up this business.
Well, I did. And again, everybody directs it at me, right? Like, even though it's like a large company now, it's like apparently I'm uh, and they make it sound like it's a mom and pop shop, and it's not.
Okay, all right. All right.
Any other questions?
No, I'll have to two on this one.
Me too. Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate you guys.
As far, I just want to say, as far as the vote for the medical examiner's office, we are un- unable to um fulfill any um obligations with um Ogumal County until we can have a full written approval on the medical examiner. Um, that, that also entails, because we don't have a medical examiner right now in, in Ogumal County, correct? So we need um a new um individual, Dr. Khan, or in this case, to be appointed medical examiner of Ogumal County. Even if um my, my uh, my idea would be, even if you um don't feel like that's a long-term solution for you, we, we would need something because we need to be able to provide cremation permits for local funeral homes. Um, we need a medical examiner to sign off on death certificates and autopsy reports and those kinds of things.
Okay. Well, go ahead, Tim.
Well, I provided you a handout that had an excerpt of the statute in it, and and what Brian said is absolutely correct. We have to appoint a medical examiner. So what I'll do is.
Oh, it has to be a singular person?
Right. Yes, you have to name the individual. And of course, they have to have credentials according to the statute, which is, the statute's uh pretty easy, and that uh just requires you to be a licensed physician, and that's it. Um, you know, so all the other credentials are, you know, in addition to what we're required to do. But as a minimum, um, you, you will need to name a person an individual. You don't have to.
Well, if, if, if we got to wait a week and we have somebody die in between, you're telling me that you're not going to handle this death or because this is usually a workshop meeting.
We're, we're not able to, correct. We're, we're not able to because we don't have anyone appointed. So no one will be able to sign off on a cremation permit, so to speak.
Was there a timeframe when this previous individual left? Just spend some time here, so what?
There has. We, we, we sent this out last week. Um, we worked with this individual throughout the month to try to provide a ninety-day notice. It was part of this individual's contract, to provide a ninety-day notice um upon departure. So um I spent a good part of that month um going back and forth, trying to negotiate an opportunity, bless you, for them to stay here for another ninety days to have a cleaner transition period. Um, we were extremely close several times, and it, and it just did not work out. And that's when we had to switch gears to this.
So right now, are you able to do services for any counties?
Uh, the counties that have approved Dr. Khan, yes.
So we do have a communication from Department of Health Human Services, and just to the states that uh I'm gonna mess up the name, I'm sure, but Dr. Mahber.
Mahber, yes.
Um, will be, as far as the state's concerned, will be the medical examiner until the board passes a resolution that says otherwise. So in their eyes, you know, we're compliant. Obviously, there would be some awkwardness here. If he's no longer employed.
Right.
That's going to be an issue.
Oh, he wouldn't be, you know, participating in his duties in the office as he is not, not working for, for the company anymore.
You lost me somewhere, Tim. Repeat that, I.
He wouldn't be able to do any services for us.
Right, but again, as far as the state's concerned, he is still our medical examiner until you pass a resolution that says otherwise.
I understand, but the sad part is, is none of us like this last minute. The sky's falling. We got to make these decision things, okay? Now we're here where we're at. We don't like this.
So.
So, sir, sir, I'm talking, please. So, but basically, just so we're on the same page, we basically need to either agree to this Dr. Khan, or we're saying that our county has nobody if one of our residents would pass away.
Right, and we'd be in violation of statute, yes.
So is our contract currently uh does this violate the contract that we currently have with these guys?
No, uh, in the contract uh itself, you have a copy of the full contract there, provided full of excerpts. And what the contract says is that am I, I'm going to get the acronym wrong, but yeah, the institute uh will uh propose a physician licensed to practice within the state to accept appointment as the medical examiner uh as needed uh for formal appointment by the board. So we're recognizing in the contract that this step is necessary. But they've done what they've committed to do in the contract through recruiting and bringing a name forward. And there's another um section in the contract that says the contractor shall assign only competent personnel to perform the work hereunder. Well, clearly, you know, if you've read the, the call it the resume, think of it's called. You, you can see that the minimum qualifications are there. There's, there's no question about that. So a qualified person has been brought forward. Uh, but it does require this extra step of the board actually acting to accept him as the medical examiner.
But there is a lapse. I, I guess I'm going to disagree with you, and I, I see the contract here. Where exactly are you reading that under? Because I don't see anything highlighted on mine.
All right, well, that.
It's the second.
What page are you on?
Section one point one. If you're looking at the full contract.
Yep.
Actually, one point one uh talks about appointment as medical examiner and contractor specified services.
Because there's a lack of services. So how's that not a breach? I mean, we're going to go a full week.
It's due to the, the lack of appointment, though.
This is just brought to us tonight, and we make no decisions tonight.
First screen, it's first screen and page down, four eight. We go down the ways is.
I'm in the agreement for comprehensive medical examiner office services.
supplemental information, medical examiner, go down about five pages. Four, three, three pages. Uh, my thing is, is uh, sir, uh, the letter from you was dated September twenty-seventh. If, if we were a county that met on the twentieth of the month.
And so what I would do in that case is like, excuse me, what I have done with uh other counties that have asked for an emergency uh meeting to appoint a medical examiner.
Well, this is just a regular, like, of a workshop. You know, we don't normally make any kind of votes on these, these meetings.
I, I was, I was unaware of that. I, I was under the impression that this, this meeting, there would be a vote, and that's why you, you folks watch.
So it's generally, you know, counties don't have an issue point. Again, I would focus in on the services that have always been provided by the company and not get into the rigmarole that is brought to you guys by competitors and bad actors, bring fake news, and that's.
There, I mean, I, I don't think uh nobody has really, we've, we've gotten some emails, and we haven't necessarily been approached, but there's been some issues that were definitely brought to our attention. Um, which again, it's our job to, to investigate this and then look into this, and this is, seems to be a reoccurring uh issues over the last year or two. Tim, what is your thoughts here?
I think the board's doing the right thing. You've got to do your diligence, as Commissioner Wilson said. Uh, you have to make sure these points are made. Uh, I don't personally think we've got a major problem here with referring this to next week to do the actual appointment through resolution through your normal process. Uh, I'm sure small chance that some major thing is going to happen between now and then that would maybe cause us to rethink that, but it's, I think, a very remote possibility. And again, as far as the state's concerned, we're covered until you make a decision. Um, you can, because this is a uh posted meeting, and obviously, this is on the agenda. You could uh go against your normal rules and do something tonight. I don't suggest you do that. Uh, just to soon see you pass a resolution that has all these components to it that we normally do.
We're covered, but we're really not. That individual's not even practicing. So even though he's named right now. We're covered, but we're really not. That individual's not even practicing. So even though he's named right now, we're not covered. I mean, it looks on paper we're covered.
So he's not, he's not employed by Michigan Health Clinic anymore, and so he'd be in violation of his visa.
Correct. At paper, we we are covered. Yes, Commissioner.
Tim, I I appreciate your insight, but. We can't take that gamble. If we have a county resident pass away, there is nobody there for support. And we can't do that.
The wonderful thing is, you can do a a motion tonight if you want to. Alright, even though it may not be what I recommend, you can still do that.
What do you recommend then? If if you don't recommend that, we have a county resident pass. What is our other? Do we have another option I'm not aware of?
I I don't even know what would happen. In your world.
Well, my my suggestion would be to pass Dr. Khan as the medical examiner. If you're if you're gripe is with me.
We're gonna ask the CEO of the company what what happened.
So so um frankly, I've never been in this situation before. I I don't know what would happen. I I do know that our medical examiner could not offer services for the county. So I I think that we would be in a in a situation here. I I do know with your local funeral homes. They require cremation permits usually on a daily basis. We're um phenomenal with turnaround time. I know they can tell you that themselves. Um you know, and obviously, if there is a death. Um the medical examiner, we can go to the scene, we can investigate, we can bring the body back and store the body. But there would be nothing that could be done without a medical examiner's approval, uh signature, uh oversight. What I would recommend um. Um and 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 just in impartial manner for the county, for your constituents, as I would, um this person is qualified. Um your administrators mentioned that as well. We've we've gone over this several times over the phone over the last couple of weeks. Last few months, just there's different things that have come up. What I would suggest, not telling anyone what to do, what I would suggest is. Point this person, and then if if you so choose and don't feel comfortable with our services. Um for your county constituents, I would, at that point, again, not telling anyone what to do. But I would, at that point, I would look in in other directions, but I would think now to cover your county, I would approve this individual who is fully qualified.
So this is just this, I'm gonna make the motion tonight to appoint the medical examiner. I will put a resolution on the agenda next week. That will. In effect, acknowledge that uh motion from tonight, but I am most comfortable. Frankly, citing the reasons why we're doing this, referring to this, referring to the contract, so. Three years from now, somebody has a record to look at and say, this is why we did it, and here's the procedure we followed. Passing the motion tonight, you get this situation resolved. You've got a medical examiner, and we back it up with a resolution next week.
I'm gonna make a resolution to. Uh appoint Dr. Khan.
Second.
We'll further look into this. I think that's our only option right now. Commissioner Scott.
Because our our contract with your company overall is still intact. It's just that this one single person is not named. Uh you you just said something about you would still respond and you can put the body in.
We would store the body for the county and that.
So you would still respond to a death? You wouldn't do an autopsy?
Sir, I'd have, no, we could not do an autopsy.
Right, you can do it.
We could not sign on final cremation permit.
Okay.
For your. Okay, but official duties.
Okay, okay, but I mean, you'd still respond to a death. I I I had a death on a property that I own. Uh of a couple of months ago. And I'll say that your person came out and did a great job for what I thought.
Okay, appreciate you saying that.
Yeah, yeah, you probably hired her. I don't know much. You did. Anyway, anyway. Anyway, you would come out, that person could come out, say that that person is dead. Arrange for the transportation, put them in storage.
Sir, I I wanna be very careful with how I answer this.
I don't know, I don't know.
I want you to be very honest. I've never, I've never had a situation like this occur before.
Let's be honest, you can't answer that question.
I get it. Okay.
I I would say that we would wanna do everything we could for the county, like we always do. I'm not just saying that.
Alright.
But um again, I I would not recommend it. I think we do offer the best services, but if the county did, in my opinion. If the county did wanna move in another direction, I would. In in my my opinion, I would approve this, so you're covered. And then. If if you wanna do 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 diligence in another direction. That's how I would recommend that.
This has just been a little bit of a frustrating uh cause the previous medical examiner who they had for years and years, a a physician out of Standish, I mean, was. Uh it it offered his services for a lot of years, unfortunately, until he deceased. So there's just been a lot of uh turnover, a lot of controversy that's that's went along with this. Um. I know there, I from some of the stakeholders, there has been some communication issues that they have voiced as well and and um. So hopefully, all of this gets cleared up.
And what I, and I appreciate that. And what I would say is, and I I always say this, I'm I'm not here to um. Fool anybody or or when, you know, I I I'm the first one to say that if we aren't doing something well, we. We take the feedback, we correct it, and then we communicate. Um so I'm not saying that. That that our office manager doesn't pick up the phone every single time it rings or anything like that, but.
And you've been here every time we've asked, and that's appreciated.
Yeah.
Even whether i- in an uncomfortable situation or not, you've been here, you've answered our questions, you've been open to us as far as coming and and. And every time we we've asked, and I I believe you've had a lot of communication with with Tim as well, so that is appreciated. So. We have a motion with support. Uh we're gonna do a roll call on this. Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Volte.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Kenny David.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you both for coming.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Randy Bos. Equilization Director. Portment Report.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. We really do offer.
Hi. How are you, sir?
Let me guess, well, you're doing good, nervous for it.
I tried.
You have good news for us?
Uh it's the uh portion report is all of the uh Delta forty twenty nine village requests from. The local units, all the townships, the cities, the village and the county. All the school districts and so I've compiled them into a report for you. Uh. Presented the uh recap that lets you know the mileage totals for each local unit in the county. And the uh tax revenue analysis, so you know. Approximately the total monies that are going to be levied this year for the winner, for the overall tax collection summer winner vote.
Can I get a hard copy of this?
Yes.
On my screen, I have to look like.
It's pretty hard. It's it's very small print on the paper, so.
On ours, we have to.
Yeah, any questions?
No, I looked through this. Appreciate it, Randy. You got anything for us? Any insight on anything?
No, we're uh just well complete with our fieldwork for annual appraisal studies. I think we'll probably go one more day next week. And uh we're setting the land values and stuff for our studies right now, so. By the end of the month, we should have all of that in place in the uh residential sales release. To the assessor, they bend to the assessors, and we're gonna finalize them, send them to the state and uh. Go through that whole process. It's going well.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sure, one question.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Uh like her, we just uh. Voted a new road patrol mill agenda, we're getting a whole bill.
Yes.
Will headly start deteriorating that?
Next year.
Next year.
Depending on.
Point zero zero.
Well, it's all based on whether there's a miller rolling back or not. And how much the uh sales studies go up, the inflationary rate versus new construction stuff. There's, there's a lot of factors to it, but. Typically, you have a rollback of some some proportion.
Yeah. Thank you.
Have a good night, Randy.
You too.
Paul Fischett, under Sheriff, Animal Shelter Agreement.
Ooh. It's a form to fill out for that.
Thank you. Did you receive a copy of the contract? It's got the red in it?
Well, yes.
Yeah, Randy does.
Well, basically, alls I did was take that email that you would have seen. Couple of weeks ago and transpose that into the current agreement, and that's what's in front of you. Um Tim asked his questions. I forwarded on to the shelter. I thought they were supposed to be here. I don't know if we have anybody, I guess, raise your hand on Zoom if anybody's here from the shelter, but. From what I recall, I actually brought the emails. They didn't have any problems with it.
So the stuff in the red is the changes from?
Stuff in the red would be changes, and that was based on that email that was forwarded to you a couple of weeks ago with what they were requesting. So I just transpose that into the current contract and.
Was the limit six before per per month?
There was no limit. In the last contract. So the limit that's in this one that they have requested for this temporary one is four per month. So that contract would be for a total of twelve dogs over the three month period.
The prior contract had a cap at fifty dogs, and then after fifty, there was a different pricing on it.
Fifty for the year.
The fifty was for.
So this is just temporary again. Till the ballot question is answered in November, then there would be a series of sit downs to. Discuss where we move forward should it pass. So. It's open for your input. As far as I know, the shelter hasn't signed it yet, but. They, I'll confirm that as soon as we get your input.
Haven't signed this contract?
I don't think they've signed it yet. No, I don't believe, but I'll have that confirmed by the time we make a decision next week.
Okay, go ahead.
Tim, did you see anything that?
No, it's it was um just as we've discussed uh in the past, and it certainly fits where we uh settle on for budget.
Um something I just seen, what was it?
Question for Paul.
Go ahead.
We've been getting a lot of calls, Liam. It's been a while now that we've been without and. We've been getting a lot of, lot of phone calls still on.
Animal control functions are, I mean, calls for service are still continuing at about the same pace they were when we had an active one. It's just now that we have to. We have to filter them and handle them differently. I can tell you, reviewing some of the deputies' daily logs, they're handing a lot more. Animal, especially dog incidents, that they have to go and and talk to our residents about. So I've seen an increase of that. Um as far as the shelter services, uh it really, this this four isn't it. You're only gonna see it like we talked about, crashes, arrests. Uh the deputies aren't out there taking in stray dogs and, you know, it's not the same as true animal control function. So I don't think this is gonna be an issue as far as the cap. Until the ballot question was answered, and that's when we sit down and really. Analyze what we need moving forward and what the shelter's gonna be able to provide, so.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
This is more of a proactive and optimistic question. If things go in November and. It does go through, do you guys have anybody in mind? Cause I mean, we all know that, obviously, the. Field is, we're not getting, you know. Any type of resumes and people wanting to come in to be patrol officers, and we know that's not only us, that's throughout the state and the country. And you you guys have any thoughts right now?
Patrol. I think is a little bit of a different animal. That was not. And yeah, I is so you're dealing with animals, obviously, so there's a different of persons that tend to gravitate towards that. So I have heard names in the past. I know another name has come across, so I think we would be able to fill this position. With a competent individual. And the problem will be the training. There's gonna be that that lag of getting them trained, having them riding along with. Other animal control officers in other counties to get their. Where they need to be in licensing or the certification process to get them out doing the job, but. I feel very confident that we would be able to fill this one a lot easier than a road deputy or somebody along that line, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Paul.
Bring back.
You might as well stay here. You have the, you're on there next, too. I didn't see any problems with that, Tim, did you?
No, I just don't bring it next week.
Uh Sheriff, you wanna come on up? With the Law Enforcement Committee jail transition report. You guys wanna give your report? Well, Sheriff makes his way up here. I'll let you guys talk as well, but I'm giving them the floor first.
Well, the jail, um it's the second day into it. I mean, there's some some big learning curve for sure. There's some functions there that we never had to do before, but. We'll we'll get through it. The problems that we had today with with the judges, uh we're gonna bring that back to the table and sort of come up. The other thing is, is I never thought about that. What's where that goes tomorrow?
What's tomorrow? I guess I have no idea what you're talking about.
Uh there's there's a there's a glitch in the in a tether system that you had, tether cutting program. All our tethers went back to the company, so they had a problem there in Roscon or Gladwin, so. It's just a a an issue that. Came up that we need to, we need to address. We need to find out what we're gonna do with this tether program, if we can get it back or. What on, I I'm not sure about it. I'm wondering about that tether program.
And yeah.
Girl has the name of the company and the contact, so first thing in the morning, be reaching out and and establishing that. As far as where we're at with the tether program.
Do you wanna give an update on this transition of what's taken place in the last couple of days?
Been uh pretty hectic.
Challenging.
Been challenging, a lot of challenges faced. Um. We're just uh been identifying issues and knocking them down. It's uh. One step at a time and.
We came, we came out of the gate when we had uh. We had Circuit Court yesterday and uh. We had a total of, I think it was ten inmates, three of which was females. So that in itself, we had to take two vehicles to go get them, bring them back, so it's it's gonna be moving. Moving parts all the time, so. What what I'm finding is transport's gonna be difficult. We gotta figure that out. Personnel, make sure we got enough personnel to do the transports, number one, and I I don't wanna stick. I don't wanna stick one correction officer in that van transporting inmates. So um we're looking into maybe possibly getting back uh some transport officers, what we're looking into, so. We gotta do something there. I don't wanna, I don't wanna stick this one correction officer by himself. Cause if something's gonna happen, that's when it's gonna happen. Escapes or whatever. Well, that and uh food service, we're we're having. We're having a little difficulty with that, getting food in there in the mornings, the afternoons. We gotta, we gotta figure that out.
Um. We got a couple of emails over the weekend, I guess, and and there was a pretty big meeting on Monday that the Law Enforcement Committee was involved in and some of the other stakeholders, I. I guess I was just surprised seeing those emails that the stakeholders weren't. More involved during this, before this process happened. So maybe some of these glitches could have been discussed, worked out, talked about. Uh so you guys have kind of been throwing everything, so.
We'll get through it.
Thirty eight inmates in uh Gladwin, or thirty eight total. Yeah, thirty eight total, so just an update. We do have five sentenced inmates that are now housed in the Haskell County. Uh because Gladwin is a seventy two bed facility, as they reiterated again today, and they've been up against that cap. Twice now since we've we've done this, so to take some of the pressure off, to make sure we don't get to that point. We have moved five sentenced inmates to Haskell. There'll be more to come on that as we stabilize. Things get settled with Gladwin, so.
Would I ask what we have a contract with? It was a little bit more correct per day?
I think they're at thirty five.
Uh Haskell was thirty five a day. Um there's not a contract right now. It's just being done on the basically mutual aid. Because of Gladwin getting to their max capacity. This is just to. Provide that we have space for Gladwin and us to put new arrests shouldn't they occur. Uh till we kind of stabilize and see how this is gonna work, so that's currently where we're at. With inmate numbers. Gladwin had sixty four this morning.
Is that it from you guys?
I think, I think once we make the move over there, we're under one umbrella. That will help. We'll be right there.
What do you mean, under one umbrella?
We're all in one building. I think that's gonna help the situation. That'll help.
You mean, when you guys move over to that, correct? Okay, I just wanna make sure I followed you.
The staff over there, so I think it'll help.
Did you have something, Bob?
Did I send out an email on Stellar that? Did I update on Stellar?
Did not.
I didn't.
I didn't get it.
So I didn't, alright, so. I didn't think I got any, well, Stellar Services reached out to us. Um they are going to leave some of their services. If you remember, they were the commissary, the bomb, the money manager, and that type of thing. They've reached out to us. They've reached out to us, um, they are going to leave us the money manager and the capability of being able to take bond deposited and their. Their machines in the back, so we're not going to have to reinvent the wheel or live in nineteen ninety-five. Uh, there's going to be a loss for that service and during the conversation where they told me that. They're going to keep that service, they're also going to try to provide us with some telephone service for within the holding cell. So we can comply with inmates' rights and have at least something that they can make phone calls while they're in the lockup. Before being transferred, so. Um, thousand dollars a month was what, and I still have not received, once I receive the actual documents, I think you may have screwed up my email. But I will forward the documents from Stellar to everybody so you can review them.
Cause it looked like they were planning on discontinuing service.
Yes, they were going to pull everything, uh, and that's when I think that one update, I told you I had reached out to them, asked them, was there a possibility? And they said that they don't operate that way because their, their clients basically are profit driven off of their sales and commissary and whatnot, so. The, the co-owners must have discussed them, the sales rep called me and said they made a decision that they will. Leave us some of these services, which will greatly help with bond and taking of cash at the facility and, and managing that. Uh, give us capability of credit card, which we would have totally lost, so. But again, there will be a charge for services, and as soon as I see those documents, they will be forwarded out as much as. But it would be nice to have the telephone service at some capacity for the inmates and then also this whole bond, which was one of the big concerns on. At Monday's meeting and that's in the process of being addressed. So more to come as soon as I get that, as far as the, the cost and what they are offering for that cost.
Law enforcement committee, go.
Okay, um, a couple of things just said here. Roscommon was the first choice. Roscommon's first choice right along the path, and we, and we had already had meetings with the judges. That we share with Roscommon County. We had meetings months ago, so to say that they were not. Part of this, they were a part of this, and if we went with Roscommon County, it would have been a very easy transition because courts were the same. But when we had to make the change to Gladwin, their operations run a little differently. They, they communicate differently by computer systems, um, their, their courts do a little bit different than we do. It's just a learning curve, but to say that they weren't involved, they were involved. It's just now making that switch, change that.
I believe my verbiage was more involved.
Judges asked Monday for a meeting with the stakeholders. So then we all met together and they pointed out some of the things that they'd like to see done. Uh, number one thing I, I heard from Judge Beebe was, was the fingerprinting. And they would, she'd like to see the fingerprinting done right here. Sheriff's office has no problem with that, they said they can do that. Uh, today, we took a tour, the. Him and. Uh, Charlie and I and uh. Um, with, along with the sheriff, undersheriff and of our jail. And, and they had some really great ideas on how to change some rooms around and different uses and stuff like that. And uh, I, I think this is, this is just like as both I said, this is a learning curve. I agree with Sheriff, once they move into there, they'll all be working a lot closer together and circle. Uh, we, we then had a law enforcement. Slash jail transition meeting this afternoon with the judges again, all three judges. They pointed out a couple of things that have arisen. Med, on medical tether, we didn't, we didn't know that, we got rid of our tethers. We didn't know that Gladwin didn't have a tether system. Roscommon had a tether system. And if we went with Roscommon, it would have been a seamless change. But since we didn't, now we got to relearn another process and the, and the. And in that meeting was Gladwin County's administrator and I believe a corporal on Zoom. And uh, and they didn't like, they didn't lay down an ultimatum, no, we're not going to do. Tethers or anything like that, so this is all clicking together, I mean, two weeks ago. Oh, or Charlie got back from Southwest, we were able to, the four of us and then we. Their undersheriff and their jail administration right back here at the table and. And out one and uh Lieutenant Tom Howard was there too, so. We, we, these guys worked out a lot of things, I was very surprised how well they. Because they talk shop like this all the time, I mean, you guys talk it every day, so they were talking between the two departments really, really clear. You know, I think the food service will work that out, we've already heard from other counties. Osco County, how they do it, Osco County hasn't had a jail in thirty years and they're feeding their inmates. And they're, they're, they's out of way and others are. Uh, as far as the uh, as far as the inmates that are sentenced. Those are the ones that won't go back to court, they're going to serve out the rest of their term. And once they go, wherever they go, wherever we put them, Indiana, doesn't matter, when they're done with their term, they give them their. Their wallet and their pair of pants and there's the door and that's what you do, they leave. That was no different than when the Genesee County inmates came to West Branch, nobody took them back home. There's the door, see you later, I think we gave a few of them a ride on a bus.
They had a free bus ride.
Yeah, and which was complimentary, complimentary bus ride. But uh, we've already reached out with Claire, Claire called us, they offered us bed space. We've already reached out to them, we have a, 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 a tentative contract on paper. That can, can handle that, um, right now, we're using Iosco on the mutual aid system. Um, so it's coming around and, and it's going to work, I know it'll work, these guys here are willing to make it work. So, um, there will be, there will be aches, aches and pains. It's not something everybody does every, every, every six months.
I'll let you talk, but I, I, I uh, I only, I only know what's reported to me during these meetings. And I know two days before this decision was made, we did have judges in this room saying there was a lot of unanswered questions and a lot of things that needed to be worked out. I don't believe I said we're not involved, I said the stakeholders. I was surprised that the stakeholders were not more involved during this process. Um, I only know who's where, when, when, when a brief summary is reported, that, that's it. So I was very surprised over the weekend, some of them emails seemed like there was definitely some urgency and some pretty significant concerns.
There was.
So.
There was.
Again, that's why I just voiced what I voiced.
Well, it's just.
This process, we knew, I, thank you, we knew a couple of weeks prior to this that Roscommon had backed out. There was a transition, was it, was it the time period that we would have liked? Probably not, but we did have some, some, some notice. So I was just shocked by those uh emails and I, I'm sure there's some kinks and this is new for everybody. So it sounds like you guys are doing an amazing job, I'm sure this has been very frustrating and, and um, you're working with the tools that you're being. Given, um, and it's a learning process for all. All I said was I was surprised that more stakeholders were not involved in this. Transition in this decision-making process. Commissioner, let's see.
Yeah, I mean, as we all know, you know, this process is new to all of us, we knew we were going to have a lot of challenges. In a perfect world, it would have been nice to have a little more time, you know, a little more preparation, a little more energy, a little more, you know, working harder here and there to get it done. But we're at where we're at, um, it's good to see that everybody's. So to this point, playing their part, we realize the importance of consistency when it comes to having meetings. This jail transition is, is huge, you know, we had a meeting this past Monday, as we talked about, we had a meeting today. It's really good to see that the jail lieutenant over in Gladwin County, he is all about making this work. He had one of his command officers with, with um him today via Zoom. We had judge, all three judges there, we had some magistrates there, we had the state police there. Everybody realizes that we have to work together on this and we need to be consistent, we need to keep the throttle down and we're going to continue to run into challenges. And we need to make the best decisions possible when those challenges arrive. Um, I just want to add to, um, I really appreciate the fact that the sheriff today, um, in our walkthrough of, of our facility. Uh, made the comment that, you know, once the sheriff department does get moved over, it is really going to help when it comes to the control there. With the lockup, the safety, and we're still going to have challenges, we're still going to have things we got to figure out. For that being said, we also, we asked um Brian and Craig. Uh, with the building inspection to be there, um, they weren't able to make it, but I will be in contact with Brian in regards to. Front of the house work that needs to be done, so the sheriff department can get moved in sooner than later. I mean, the sheriff's made it very well known that it's going to help, so we're going to get very aggressive this coming week to get the people in there. To see what we need to do, which is just standard things, there's some painting needs to be done, there's some carpet cleaning. We got possibly a mid-transition to put in between a room, so the sheriff can have a couple more offices, yet also open that room up when it needs to be. And, and we're going to get aggressive, we're going to start getting on that next week, get some estimates, bring those estimates to the board. Um, and then also today, this is my last thing, uh, you know, really wanted to make sure that, you know, there is a large. Part of this jail now not being used, you know, as this is just starting, so we want to make sure. That the zones that can be brought down to say fifty, fifty-five degrees, you know, we want to do that now. We want to make sure that lights that would maybe typically turn on, that don't need to be turned on, those aren't going to no longer turn on. Um, you know, we've asked Chris today to get involved, I know Tim's going to be talking with him tomorrow morning. To make sure those items get taken care of now, because we obviously need to start saving on utility costs. And there's a large part of that jail that just simply won't be being used, so. Um, we understand the importance again of these transition meetings, all our stakeholders talking consistently. Um, we have another meeting for the jail transition on September seventeenth, we have another meeting on September thirty-first. And there's also been a lot of talk amongst those stakeholders that of course, they don't need to wait for these ma- meetings, they have contacts with each other, they're already working in between the meetings. And we're just going to continue to work really hard at this. So that's all I have on the L A.
You know, just one more thing, I'd like to say, right now, all hundred percent of our inmates are out. We do not have an inmate house that's a jail right at this minute, might one, one might come in and we're ready to take them in.
Another thing on that note, um, we don't necessarily know it's a problem, unless it becomes a problem. That's when we got to figure it out. Now, there's, there's bumps here that I came across that I never really thought of and uh, I, I guess that's, that's where I'm at with it.
I, I would also like to say that with even though there's sentenced inmates and there's not the travel back and forth. Um, I would like to try to keep them as close as possible to Ogumon County, just because they're sent, sentenced inmates. Um, they still need family support, um, I, I would like them, if at all possible, to try to keep them as close as we can to Ogumon County.
Yeah, that's, that's why I reached out to Sheriff Rank over there in Iosco, I mean, that's relatively close.
That's extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I have the ARPA fund application.
The first part of this, and we've already talked about some uh, work that we want to do over at the county building and those um. RFPs are now begun, going to become a priority of mine, not only because we've got the budget work cleared, which cleared some of my calendar. But on Tuesday, I received an update, uh, we get these quarterly newsletters uh through the US Department of Treasury about ARPA. And I was a little alarmed at one of the statements that was in there about obligating these funds. Up until Tuesday, uh, the understanding has been when we, as county our size, but ten million or less in ARPA money. Uh, that we simply needed to designate this as lost revenue and that's the end of it. In fact, we've actually filed our final report on this, it was accepted, it says exactly that. An interpretation came out though on, on this newsletter on Tuesday that said. Regardless of that, we still have to obligate those funds, not spend them, but obligate them by December thirty-first of this year. So that means the other um, uh, projects that we talked about, we had mentioned the boilers, we've mentioned the lighting over there. Uh, those are suddenly very much in play, I'll send RFPs out on those too and we'll. We've got at least, you know, some good numbers for you to work with and you may still decide we do or don't want to do one or two of these projects, we also talked about the windows. But at least we'll have the information there. One of the other components is, I'm reading through the um obligation memo, if you will. Uh, a number of our routine costs that we go through, just as a manner of operation are. When ARPA money, I'm not worried that we're going to have to give any of this back one bit. Because this was given to us, remember, I believe, three or four years ago, so I've got three or four fiscal years of other expenses that are eligible. So I'll definitely be able to do the accounting and show that, yes, this money was all dedicated to properly uh funded projects. But at the same time. Yeah, I'm just going to have to go back through and probably work with the auditors to figure out exactly how that accounting is going to work. Uh, right now, we have the ARPA money segregated in its own fund, which we wanted to do for our own accounting purposes, so we could go right to one fund. Where those monies were spent, so it would be a matter then of opening up some lines if, um, let's just say uh. I don't know, some other project that we did uh was eligible, then we'll have, just have to show the accounting, just like we would do with a budget adjustment. That says, okay, now we're going to say this money was spent for this. But that does mean it's going to end up putting everything into the general fund, it's going to become a whole uh another exercise for us. Because that's going to now impact what our fund balance looks like and how you obligate fund balance and so on, but we'll, we'll deal with that uh a little bit later. The long and the short of it is, the next three months, um, but I'm going to have to put a lot of time into making sure that we are doing. What the federal government wants us to do, to show that we've obligated the funds, not have to give any back. Now, I say obligated, that's just it, I mean, we'll go through RFPs and say, okay, X dollars is going to go for. Um, you know, bathroom ADA compliance, uh, we'll put that in there, we don't have to spend the money by the end of the year. We still have until December thirty-first to twenty-six to actually spend the money. So even if we have a project that contractor says I can't get to this until June, that's fine. Uh, just so long as we have it under contract, that's going to be done by uh December twenty, December thirty-first of twenty-six, we'll be in good shape. So more on that to come, but the RFPs, well, shoot those out today by your first round of meetings in November, we'll definitely have responses. Be able to look at costs for some of those projects, in the meantime, we did tour the jail today, there are some improvements that would definitely qualify. Uh, for ARPA money there, they're not huge cost items, but they will certainly help, uh, as far as the operation of the sheriff's office is concerned. To have those done, uh, and then uh, you know, any other projects that we have between now and then, we can certainly entertain as well.
We talked about the lighting, the boiler system, the entrance, the bathrooms.
And uh windows would be a big one.
Commissioners, Commissioner, may you?
Yeah, uh, yeah, how come we don't do both doors? If you got to make them so.
Yeah, I think, I think we would do.
If we got to do one.
Yeah.
There's no sense leaving the other one out, right?
Commissioner Scott?
No, I don't have anything on this.
Commissioner, let's see.
I mean, yeah, these are items we've talked about and, you know, we sadly had budget issues, that some of the stuff's kind of fallen back a little. But these are very important items and now we've really got to make sure to get aggressive and, and get some good numbers and see where we go.
Okay, you're going to send out RFPs?
Yes.
General requirements.
That, that was. He summarized everything.
Oh, yes, okay, September twenty-four overtime, kind of sorry time report.
So you had the overtime report on the iPads, and this is um September thirtieth report, so this is uh pretty close. Not exactly what we show for the fiscal year. Of the six departments that we show, five of them did uh pretty good. On the very bottom, our secondary road patrol uh was over on overtime, but it was a hundred fifty dollars, it's not a huge chunk. So of course, corrections is uh considerably higher than what was budgeted. Now, what we'll do next round of meetings, we'll be working on our fourth quarter adjustments. I know, uh, is, this is sheriff's office, that uh, one of the reasons why overtime was higher is they were down. Uh, I believe two positions and it's not been a short time that they've been down two positions. Uh, without looking at the numbers to give you precise uh indications, in all likelihood, there's going to be wage dollars that weren't spent. Because those positions weren't filled and the easy thing to do will be to move that money that would have been dedicated to wages down to this overtime line. To help address the overage, this is one line that went over, there are a couple of others that went over in corrections. But I believe the bottom line, and it's been a couple of weeks since I looked, but the bottom line was still looking like it was within budget. So as disturbing as that number looks, uh, when we look at the overall apartment in its bottom line, we're. So as, uh, disturbing as that number looks, uh, when we look at the overall apartment in its bottom line, we're probably gonna be pretty close. The rest of the report or, or the various graphs that we've been looking at over the years, over this past year, uh, in particular. Draw your attention down to the, uh, corrections and it's about four in. Uh, you know, we were, uh, this is our highest year. Uh, the highest month was back in, uh, twenty twenty-two. But we have several months that are very close to that peak. And do remember too, that this year we did include the comp time calculated into this and it worked out, uh. Yeah, we should do that because our comp time banks were all, uh, reset to zero at the end of the fiscal year. So those costs were real. So they're here. So you see them. So there's a little bit of distortion from that, but you, you can see exactly what those trends looked like. It'll be interesting moving forward into twenty-five, how we compare, obviously, uh, with, uh, smaller staffs and so on. It won't be, uh. Quite, quite as extensive. The very last page, you see the report by, uh, by employee, employees identified only by number. There are three. Uh, that I've highlighted in yellow that I'll be doing a little bit more work on because it looks like they overspent their comp banks. I don't think they did. I think there's, uh, when we did the transition between overtime and the UKG. We had some hiccups between the data on that one paid period. So I'm gonna go back and look at that. I'm guessing that just something was lost in the paperwork that I report out on my system. And this will probably clear up. You know, if it doesn't, um, we'll be having other conversations about it, but I'm pretty confident it will. Uh, we had issues even with the PTO banks not coming over one for one. So we had to go through. Say we, I mean Tracy, had to go through each of our employees to make sure that the banks were set where they were supposed to be. So there was literally a manual override that had to be done to make sure those comp bank, or those PTO banks were brought up to, uh, accurate figures. Those are all cleaned up by the time we did our first full pay period out of UKG. So I'll check on those again, just to make sure that, um, we, there wasn't a mistake in there. Uh, and again, if there was, um, you know, I may have to take some other, uh, steps to make sure that those are balanced out.
Yeah, cause that percentage of overtime looks pretty significant, a hundred and forty-one percent.
Definitely is. And it's a hundred and forty-one percent of a big number. So it's, um, you know, doubly alarming.
Questions?
No, I don't. Um, we looked this over and the L E means also.
Good. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Scott.
Well, uh, the transition time and, and, uh. I think we got, we got a lot of things going on, um. But we'll work through the, we'll work through the jail transition. And, uh, I'm looking forward to a whole new budget, whole new bu- uh, fiscal year. I don't have anything else.
Commissioner, what's he?
Uh, mirror Commissioner Scott on those statements. And then, uh, this past week on Monday night, we had a EDC workshop. I told you guys about last week. We had one last Monday regarding QuickBooks and this past Monday was regarding customer service at Michigan Works. It was a decent turnout, but a really good event. Um, other than that, I've just got a lot of my meetings coming up here starting next week. It's all I had to report.
Commissioner, no comments?
I will not, uh, be here the next weeks. I will be.
Well, really?
I will be.
Hunting?
Hunting. Um, for sure next week. And I don't think I'll, I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent sure I won't be able to follow. We, we leave Wednesday and the ninth through the eighteenth, so I will not be here. So. I appreciate.
Probably can't go to that dinner then.
No, I just think that.
Give it to somebody.
Public comment? In the room? Public comment on the phone? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Go good night, everyone.
Doug got me in trouble.